Okay. Okay. We're going to start the meeting. I have 7:03. Before we start, I'd like to make one quick comment. If you have phones, could you silence them at this time? We're going to be doing the Pledge of Allegiance and we don't need any interruptions, so especially council members up here, if you silence any of your electronics. We're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance and I'm going to hand it over to Veronica Jones.
Good evening and welcome. Tonight, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, we have Club Scout Pack Forty. Troop Forty is not new to us. We've had the Boy Scouts and Eagle Scouts from Troop Forty lead us in the flag salute before. The charter organization that sponsors this troop is First AME Church in Pasadena. The boys attend Jackson and Franklin PUSD schools. The den leaders are Arturo Montez, Den Mother Whitney Reese, and Kevin Van Hooten. We're ready. Oh, goodness. How cute.
Color Guard, attention.
What? What? It's on?
Just get in front of it.
What?
You're okay.
Okay. Color Guard, attention. Scout salute. All others, please prepare yourself for the Pledge of Allegiance. Color Guard, wait. Color Guard, halt. Color Guard, post the flag. Color Guard, prepare to present the colors. Color Guard, present the colors. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for the liberty and justice for all. Color Guard, post the colors. Color Guard, attention. Oh, no, shoot, that's my second. No, wait. Oh, shoot. Color Guard, halt. Two. Color Guard, dismissed. Thank you for joining us tonight. Okay, I can't, I don't know the rest. Let's see. Let's see.
Thank you. Had a picture? Thank you.
That was cute. I'm going to try that. I can't. I can't do big.
I'd like to say a huge, big thank you to the Boy Scout troop from Jackson Elementary. Cub Scouts, sorry. Anyway, I'd like a huge, big thank you and we look forward to them joining us again in the future at some point. Moving on to item 1.2, to roll call, Councilmember Veronica Jones.
Good evening again. Councilmembers, please respond after I call your name. Okuri Zimi.
Present.
Pat Sutherland.
Here.
Jennifer Lee.
Approved, absent.
Dorothy Wong.
Here.
Jeff Simmons.
Here.
Victoria Knapp.
Present.
Billy Malone.
Present.
Aaron Cheetah.
Present.
Gloria Sanica.
Here.
Antonio Becerra.
Here.
Justin Robertson. I'm sorry, he shouldn't be on here. I miss him already. Okay. Regina Wilkins. Sylvia Vega. Diane Markson.
Here.
Nick Sen- Sen- Sanangelo?
Santangelo, I'm here.
Santangelo, okay. Thank you. Welcome.
Sylvia Vega's here.
I didn't call you?
She called her, but you didn't, she didn't hear you.
Oh, okay. Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay, we have a quorum with one missing, so we have 15.
Okay.
Thank you.
14.
14. Why would we have 14?
We have an empty seat right now. Moving on to item 1.3, for approval for the 2019 minutes, Pat Sutherland.
I wanted to let you know that the Executive Committee met on August the 13th and approved the agenda as its presented copies are back, they were on the piano, I think they're probably still there. Are there any corrections or additions to the agenda? In that case, I move that we accept it as presented.
Is, can we have a vote on the table? I'm sorry, for all those, for approval for the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
All those say nay? Any abs- any absence, abstains? Okay, so proved.
May I also add that the refreshments on the table in the back have been given to us tonight by State of Brothers, so please check them out if you haven't already and welcome the folks as soon when they get up here to talk about themselves.
Moving on to the Officers' Report, item number 2.1, the Chairman's Report. That's me. I'd like to say welcome to everybody. This is my first full day as the position of Chairperson for the Altadena Town Council. I look forward to the year ahead. I hope that I can stand up for, and be as good and as equal to the community as some of the predecessors in this chair. I hope to continue some of the good work that's been done in recent years with the, with the council in community outreach, community engagement, engaging many of the groups around town and making them more unified with the Town Council and so that we can work together as a community and move a lot of more, a lot of bigger and better things forward. We have been struggling for several years, even when the last time I was in the Executive Committee and I was corresponding secretary, with a web presence, which we intend to work on, and I'm hoping within this year that we have a much better web presence and more engagement and the new website coming soon and so forth and so on. I will make that short. Hopefully, after I've had one more month, I'll have a lot more to bring forward. In the meantime, I look forward to the year ahead and thank you for giving me this opportunity. Move forward to item 2.2, the Vice Chair, Councilmember Pat Sutherland.
As indicated on the agenda tonight, public comment will be heard, item number seven, after the community reports are given. Comment cards you'll find in the back of the room. If you would like to make a comment during public comment, please fill out the card. Since we do not respond to public comment during the meeting, if you'd like an individual response, please make sure that we have your either phone number, email address, so that your council member can get back to you. And I think that's it. Thank you.
Moving on to item 2.3, Recording Secretary, Councilmember Veronica Jones.
Good evening again. The minutes of June 16, 2019, were emailed to all council members with a request for any additions or corrections. All corrections and additions that were received have been incorporated into the final minutes. Having added all additions and corrections into the minutes, I make a motion that the minutes of July 16, 2019, be accepted in final form and placed on the Town Council's webpage. Second.
Okay, motion put forward in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any noes? Anyone abstaining? One abstent. Can you, thank you. Moving forward, item 2.4, Treasury Report, Jennifer Lee. She will not be here this evening. She's absent, so corresponding secretary, Councilmember Dorothy Wong will be reading the report.
Yes, thank you. So, in passing, two ships passing in the night, Jennifer is not here today, so I defer to the checking account balance when she comes back next month, but I have been asked to hand out our donation can and pass it around. Again, we are all volunteers, we all love Altadena and every dollar counts to help make this a better place. So we'll pass it around our table that way. We'll go to our audience if you'd like to make a donation and back towards Victoria. Bring your can around. Thank you. And then, yeah, that's it.
Okay. At item 2.5, we're going back to Dor- oh, you did, the corresponding secretary, that's all part of the same report, right?
Yes, so.
Okay, so there's nothing to add?
Yes, thank you.
So there's item 2.4 and 2.5. Moving on to item three, now we go to the supplemental election for Census Track 4603.02. For this, I'm going to pass you over to the, one of the election member, election committee members, Councilmember Pat Sutherland.
Okay, so now I'm wearing my election committee hat since Jennifer, who is the election chair, is not here tonight. We have, since the Census Track 4603.02 did not have a candidate running in the last election, we are holding the election tonight for the new council member. We have two candidates who have given us applications and in alphabetical order. First, we are going to, the council will hear brief statements from each candidate and then we will vote on, by, by, secret ballot. I was trying to think of a clever name, a secret ballot. I will, when we come to that, I will pass out the ballots and Veronica, Veronica, Victoria, you have the ballot box over there, so if then, instructions will follow as soon as the candidates have spoken. So first, let's hear from Chris O'Malley.
Does this thing on? Okay. Councilmembers, thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to address you today in public. Thanks for showing up. For those of you who don't know me, my name's Chris O'Malley. I am a native Southern California resident. I grew up in Laconia. I lived in Pasadena for most of my twenties. My wife and I moved to Altadena a little over three years ago when we found out that we were pregnant with our son, Lincoln. That's what happens when your dad teaches US history. I saw the open seat and I figured I'd run for a couple reasons. Philosophically, I believe democracy only works when the people that are able and willing to do the work step up and do the work. I found out at my school, I'm on a lot of boards and a lot of committees and I can do the work, so that's number one. Number two, I'm going to be here in the community for a long while. I would like to see my son grow up in the same house. I'd like to see him off to college from our front door. I'd like to leave that for him when we pass. So, my mom always said that you should leave places a little bit better than you found them, and I think this would be an opportunity for me, not only to leave the place a little better than I found it, but for me to show him and set an example for him that that is what you do in a community. It's more than just meeting your neighbors, it's about making a difference. Concretely, if I don't win, you can just keep these things in mind. I'd really love to see an island on Fair Oaks from Woodbury to about Mariposa. I'd like to see the roads repaved. I'd like to see more businesses like the Ale House and Pizza of Venice and the Red Hen and Hoopla and maybe a few, few less liquor stores, maybe no payday predators. Most importantly, I'd like to be able to send my kid off on his bike in a few years to the local public school, knowing that he'll be safe on those streets and he'll get a good education where I'm sending him. I threw my hat into the ring for those reasons and to be totally honest with you, I was guessing that I would probably be the only one to do so. I did not anticipate that I would be locked in a contest with an incumbent with such deep roots in the community and with such an array of impressive accomplishments as Dr. Thomas has, so I won't take it personal. That's all. Thank you very much for your time.
It's always good when you can look around and look into the face of family. My name is Sandra Thomas. Good evening, Mr. Chair, to the council and to my community. I've been in Altadena for some 43 years and I'm proud to say, in those 43 years, I have served my community. I have served my community as faithfully as I know how. I've been involved, I haven't just sat back, I've been involved in many areas of the community. I had a proud second just a moment ago when the young man, the first flag that he picked up was the Altadena flag, which is, I have a special part of my heart that's attached to that. I won't talk about it, it's not necessary. But he picked that up like we had to give some kind of allegiance to it, but, so I was very happy to see that. I do have one question that someone asked me, and I will take any other questions that anyone has. They asked me, why didn't you run during the general election? And I want to answer that. At that time, I was going through a little bit of a physical challenge, but everything that you see from me says, don't ever let your challenges overshadow your hard work and your accomplishments. And so, I felt like that I had to step back on my own words and step up to the plate and do what I knew that I needed to do. I did speak to my doctors, they said, you're fine, you're a tough old woman, just go on out there and do what you've been doing. And so, I'm glad to be able to be, to be back, even able to ask you to vote for me. I'd like to return to my seat in 4603.02. And the reason I would like to become, to return to my seat, I'd just like to see all of us work together, together, to make Altadena the very best Altadena that we can make it. You know, many of us have been, I've sat on this council many years before and I've served as Chair of the council, but I would just like to continue to do the work that I've, that I love doing for my community and I'm going to ask you for your votes. Thank you very much.
Okay, council, councilmembers, you each have a ballot. If you would start, Victoria, put the ballot, and pass the box around.
While, while they're passing the box around, just as a little piece of information, just in case you wonder why I'm not putting a ballot in the box, the Chair does not vote on elections like this unless there's a tie, then the Chair has the dividing vote.
In case anybody's wondering, these are the boxes that we use for the general election, but we're not Farnsworth Park, so, but it works just as well. Interesting. This is close. But it looks like Dr. Thomas will return to her former seat, so congratulations, Sandra. If you would come up and, Councilmember Malone will swear you in.
Dr. Thomas? Repeat after me. I have your name written here, so I know how to say it correctly. Repeat after me. Hold your right hand in the air. Aye.
Aye.
Dr. Sandra Thomas.
Dr. Sandra Thomas.
Accept the position bestowed upon me.
Accept the position bestowed upon me.
On behalf of the community.
On behalf of the community.
I pledge to faithfully execute.
I pledge to faithfully execute.
All duties and responsibilities.
All duties and responsibilities.
And to uphold the Town Council's bylaws.
And to uphold the Town Council's bylaws.
And ethical standards.
And ethical standards.
During my term in office.
During my term in office. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Does anybody have a?
[inaudible].
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Thomas.
Thank you, Sandra.
I would also like to say thank you and for participating to Chris O'Malley and Supervisor Catherine Barger last month made a comment and said, you know, it's not easy when you make that step to run for any office, even for the Town Council, so we applaud you and anybody else that wishes to stand up and we support anybody else that wishes to stand up and support their community. And I hope that's not the last we hear from you. All right, now we're going to go to public safety reports. Item four, we'll start with item 4.1 from the California Highway Patrol. We have Officer Stephanie Norton.
Good evening. So there's stats for July, they're very comparable to June. There is a total of 24 crashes. Two of those were hit and run. Five of those included some type of injury and two of those were DUI crashes that were It looks like Woodbury had the most crashes with four for July. And the DUIs actually were down, there was three DUIs and like I said, two of them were the collisions. So it's been a quick six months, but I'm actually returning full-time back to the road. And Officer Cooper, he's standing back there, he's going to be taking over, so he'll now be the community officer for Altadena. Thank you for inviting me to these meetings. Any questions that I can answer?
Any questions from the council?
So you'll be driving here in Altadena?
No, so I, unless, um, we have a beat here. I'll still be in Altadena, but I'll be back on the freeways. Yeah, I won't predominantly be up in Altadena working.
Well, thank you for your work.
Councilmember Knapp?
On the hit and runs, were there any arrests subsequently?
Uh, that I don't.
You don't know? We might hear from the sheriff. Okay, thanks.
And welcome back, Officer Cooper.
Yes.
Who's been here before.
Welcome back, Officer Cooper.
Yeah, that's right. Who's been here before, yeah.
I'm sorry, one quick question, the DUI, I'm sorry, yeah, the DUIs?
Mm-hmm.
Do you know what street those were on primarily?
Um, one was Fair Oaks, one of them was Lake, and then the other one was just one of our smaller streets.
Thank you.
I think that's the questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, item 4.2, the Altadena Sheriff's Station, Captain Marjorie Jacobs. Welcome.
I didn't think I'd have to raise that. Okay, good evening, Mr. Chair, fellow Town Council members. First, I just want to thank everybody that came out to the National Night Out on August 6th at Farnsworth Park. We had a great time, big turnout, and hopefully, some of you folks came out that night that are here this evening, we really appreciate it. Also, another thing, we have Coffee with a Cop coming up, if you're interested in meeting me in person, other than in Town Council meetings or at concerts. I'll be there on Thursday, September 19th, from eight, I'm sorry, 6:30 to 8 o'clock at the Coffee Gallery on Lake Avenue, and I'll leave some flyers up here for you folks and it'll be all over social media, so you'll be able to see that as well. As far as crime goes, overall, Part One crime is definitely trending in the right direction. It's about 5% down in July compared to June. The first four categories, homicide, rape, robbery with weapons and robbery strongarm, are all zeros. I'm happy to report that. As far as the aggravated assaults, we went from four crimes to five. There was an incident where a firearm was, was pointed at a clerk at one of our local businesses and the clerk was non-desirous of any kind of prosecution, however, there was a report taken. Another incident where there was a mutual combat, friends knew each other and there was actually an assault with a small club baseball bat type of thing, where that suspect was arrested. There was another one with a juvenile that punched another juvenile in one of the group homes. That juvenile was also arrested and none of these were ever, were gang-related. We had one domestic violence, assault with a boyfriend, girlfriend, the suspect was arrested in that incident. We also had, we went from three residential burglaries to six residential burglaries. One was an attempt, there was no loss. Window smashes were the, were the prime main entrance into these residents and mostly taken was jewelry and small electronics. There was also a theft from an unlocked garage door, which was a leaf blower that was later recovered shortly after the crime. One of the areas that I really need to focus on, and we focus on it all the time, is our larceny, grand theft, petty theft, and that's from vehicles that are left unlocked or larceny, grand theft, petty theft, and that's from vehicles that are left unlocked, or like gardening supplies or tools left in the bed of pickup trucks that aren't chained down or secured in some way. But I can say that 15 out of the 21 reported in July were a result of unlocked vehicles. And we just can't help that, because what they're doing, and we have video from people's next doors, is they're going along and they're tugging on door handles, and if your door's open, they're going to go in and they're going to take whatever they can, that they can get rid of quickly, put in their pockets, and walk like it's nobody's business, nobody's son. So, that's happening. I can only tell you so many times, I feel like a parent with teenagers, you tell them, and you tell them, and you tell them. But I tell my family the same thing, it's like wearing a seatbelt, you just have to get in the habit of doing that. Checking your car, checking your doors, looking in your cars to see, is there anything that looks like somebody would want to steal it? It could be your gym bag, but it is still a crime of opportunity, there's backpacks, sunglasses, phones. We actually had two catalytic converters taken off of vehicles, a older model Honda and a older model Toyota Prius. So, we had two catalytic converter thefts in that, in this past July. We also had, we went from eight to 11 vehicle burglaries. Two were at the Eaton Canyon Nature Center, and two were at the golf center or golf course as well. There were window smashes and door prays to get into the vehicles, so those were locked vehicles that were entered by means of force. We went, we just had a few shopliftings this July. Grand theft autos, we were the same. We had five last month, we had five this month, four have been since recovered, so that's good news. And overall, we have overall of 32 to date of grand theft autos, down for 33% from 2018. So, we're looking good in the grand theft auto department. We had one arson that was reported, which was actually kind of an attempt arson, it was a lit piece of charcoal that was placed under people's front tires or rear tires. It didn't do any damage to anything, but we have to categorize it as we categorize it. I'm not sure why that was done. In the census tracts, 4610, we had the most crimes, they were listed as 14. These were basically, again, they just got hit with the larcenies, with the vehicles that were unlocked. People were fishing in that area, pulling up door handles, and taking whatever they could possibly conceal and get out of there. So, nothing extremely violent or anything to worry about, but just be more aware of your surroundings and secure your vehicles in all the census tracts. The census tract with the largest decrease in crimes went from 10 to 4, and that was 4602. The reduction was mainly in residential burglaries and larceny grand thefts, so that's great work in 4602. And basically, we continue to have our reserves go out on the weekends primarily to the trailheads, handing out cards, making sure people are aware that when they park their cars, they need to lock them, because that's just, people look, they watch, they know you'll be gone for a few hours, and they have all the time in the world to do what they want to do and make you a victim. So, please continue to look out for that, and if you see something, obviously, say something, call the desk, you know, report it, and we'll get a car out there as soon as we can, as we prioritize our calls. So, if, that's all I have to report, if you have any questions, Councilmember?
Any question from the Council? Councilmember Simmons?
Question over there.
Yes.
The residential burglaries in 4601, give a rough location?
It was in the 2600 block of Lincoln, North Lincoln?
No. That's not 4601.
Oh, sorry, it's hard to read, and these lights are terrible. Residential burglaries, correct?
Correct. You're showing two.
Now, I have to check the...
It's going to be northeast.
You know, I don't have the other...
You can tell us later.
I'm sorry?
If it's hard to get.
You can get back to me. The two smashing grabs at the golf course?
Okay.
Rough time of day or day of week?
That was about 2 o'clock in the afternoon.
Week?
During weekdays, yeah, weekdays.
I had a question over there.
Chairman, along?
Where you going?
Councilmember Sneaker?
Okay. In the areas that have the highest crime incidences, do you provide more police patrol in those areas, or can we order more police patrol in those areas? Because since I've been on the Town Council, I noticed that Census Track 4610 has, it's almost been a consistent high level of crime in that area. And then I also wanted to know, you said that the 4602, they went from 10 to 4, what happened in that area that made the crime go down? And could that same whatever they did there be applied in 4610 and maybe even 4611?
Yes. To answer your first question, we do, anytime we have crime trends, we work with our crime analyst, and she's exceptional, she'll point out areas, time of day, day of the week, crimes that are occurring, and that's what we talk about when we brief our troops and they go out in the field. So, if there's an area that's constantly being hit, such, you know, in 4610 or another census tract, we're going to put out an extra patrol request. And that's basically where they're going to patrol more frequently, if they have a report to write, and they need to park their car, they may park in that area, just to see, high visibility is huge. If you see us, you tend not to want to commit crimes.
Right.
So, we try to spread ourselves as wide as we can, as far as we can, but if there are certain areas that are focal points for crime trends, then we're going to focus on those areas. And we're going to work with the communities in those areas to try to get more engaged, and if you see something, say something.
Do you make an attempt to like engage the businesses around there? Because we could probably maybe even have the businesses put more lighting, you know, you're actually protecting the businesses. So, you know, suggestions like more lighting, maybe cameras or something like that out there, and maybe involve them in your meetings? Do you guys do that?
Absolutely. In fact, we're going to work on a business watch in 4610 to try to get the businesses together and point out some of those issues. But you have to understand, if we take a crime report, our deputies are constantly giving, they make the area aware that if it's a household and the shrubs are high and you can't see and people can hide behind them, we're just trained to give those thoughts into, you might want to cut your hedges, you might want to get some motion lights over here. Same with businesses. If parking structures are super, super dark and there's no security, we can make those advisements, it's whether or not they want to go forth with that and put the money into protecting the businesses, but more importantly, the people.
Right.
You know, people are more important in my mind than property, especially with lighting, and there's opportunities for bad things to happen when there's no lighting.
Councilmember Markinson?
Actually, I have two things, one for you, but Gloria, in the past, one of the things that we've been able to do, in particular in Sacramento, west of Marengo, they had overgrown, the county had overgrown trees that were over the lights and things like that, and we can contact the county to get some of that done by them as well. If you find in your, you know, in your neighborhoods that there's a problem with lighting from the county trees, we can get those cut away so that there's more light. I just wanted to, I think it's okay for me to say this now, the operations lieutenant told me that you'd been successful on the Crary House, and I just really wanted to thank, that was a long and hard road, that house, to get the people out of it. We had a drug situation at that house that has gone on for a long time, and people living there that shouldn't have been living there, and I know you guys worked really hard, along with law enforcement and legal, to get that taken care of.
Absolutely.
So, that was a lot of work, so thank you.
My pleasure.
And then, we did hear, what, recently, this week, that about the homeless encampment, that you guys worked really hard to get cleaned up. So, you're out there working hard, we know, to help us with some of the different things in Altadena.
And additions to that, you worked really hard to get the unauthorized marijuana store out of my census tract, and I have to thank you, and the community thanks you, yeah.
You're welcome.
I'm still getting thanks for that.
Councilmember Jones?
About 4610, there's certain things that we have that other census tracts don't have. We have group homes, we have businesses that are open 24 hours, we have an abundance of, well, I can think of two liquor stores. No, one, I guess, is in my census tract. But we have those things that make the crime rate look higher, and they're not, as she said, they're not violent crimes, but there's kids breaking out of the group home, going down the street, smashing the windows, and doing things like that. So, as long as we have those businesses, we probably will have a different rate than other census tracts when you have businesses open 24 hours. So, I just wanted to say that. And we are doing a business, we're going to get together with the businesses to start a business, what do you call it, business watch?
Any more questions? No? Okay. Councilmember Knapp?
Thank you. This was just a carryover from my question to the CHP. Do we, do you ever report, who reports out or back on hit and runs, whether there are arrests made subsequent to the hit and run? Do we ever hear back on them? Is there a conduit there of, or no?
No, I think it's the Highway Patrol that would report back on that, we don't...
You don't handle it at all?
Unless there's a warrant and we arrest them on a warrant.
Okay.
That would be the only way we would know, because we don't have a traffic department.
Okay. Correct, but CHP didn't know, so, I was curious. Okay, thank you for that.
Any more questions? I have one quick question, because it was, somebody had asked me this. When you're talking about break-ins to automobiles, is it predominantly happen on the street or the driveway? Would somebody be advised to put both their vehicles in the driveway if they fit as opposed to living on the street? Is there a primary area that they would...
Well, I can tell you that the two catalytic converters, those cars were curbside. So, yes, if you can fit in your driveway, where you've probably got motion lights and better security, and people aren't going to be lurking, the fishing, the fishing, I'm talking about when they're pulling on the handles, video that we have are in the street.
Okay.
So, they walk down the street and do that.
So, where possible, always in the driveway?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, moving on, item number 4.3 from County Fire.
That's not Chief Mackey.
It's not Chief Mackey.
Maria Greiken.
Spoiled having Chief Mackey here two months in a row.
We get spoilt with you this evening as well.
Okay, for the month of July, we had a total of 355 responses in Altadena. 296 of those were for medical calls, and of that, 296 patients, 212 of them were transported to hospitals. We did have six fires. One, two, two were trash fires, one was a grass fire, 40 feet by 40 feet, grass fire behind JPL, no cause was determined on that, so we don't know what that was. Two vehicle fires. And then the one structure fire that we had was on Galbraith Road. Apparently, they were doing renovations, they were working on the roof, and something happened and the roof caught on fire. And if you look at the medical calls and you see one smoke inhalation call on there, that was a result of that particular incident. And he was fine, he wasn't transported. We did have a number of power lines down throughout the community, let's see, one, two, three, four, five power lines down, and two with just the wires down. And then we had two gas leaks. And we have a total of 13 collisions that happened in Altadena. The numbers are always going to be different, because we don't both always respond to all of them, so. That's it? Are there any questions?
Any questions from the Council?
I have a question.
Councilmember Doc, one?
Hello. Hi.
Hello.
So, in just breaking down the, I guess it's the medical, I guess the easiest question is, when it says person sick, what differentiates person sick from abdominal pain, allergic reaction, and all those specific breakdowns?
They don't really tell us. It's how the calls are dispatched. It could be somebody just feels nauseous, it could be somebody who drank too much. There's, when they don't really give us a good idea when they call for 911, it just goes, that's why you notice person sick is probably one of the highest totals, and it's when they're not real clear about what is happening.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions? Councilmember Selfalow?
I did have last month's report here, too, I was wondering, it's like, what's the deal with the power lines? Because I think last month there were more power lines down even than this month, and we haven't had any big, huge wins, so what's the deal?
It's, you know, we used to never report the power lines down. It's just something that we started doing, because, you should know, it's not uncommon. And you have no more instances of power lines down than there are in La Cañada, or Santa Clarita, or Malibu, or anywhere else. It happens.
Okay.
Yeah, it's very common.
No more questions? Thank you, thank you. Moving on. We're now going to go item five, special presentations. And we're going to the first one, which is 5.1, which is the introduction to Stater Brothers with Steve Toscano, District Manager.
First, I want to take a second to personally thank the Council, specifically Councilmember Markinson for giving us the opportunity to be here today. Feel very welcomed here and appreciate it. So, part of the reason why we are here today, kind of twofold. First, I want to give a little history of who we are as a company, we're fairly new in this community, and, you know, some of the things that we offer, not just our customers, but the communities that we do serve in. So, kind of stepping back and looking at our history, we were founded by two World War II veterans back in 1936 by the name of Cleo and Leo Stater. So, they were able to start and open their first company in Yacaipa, and this all happened during the Great Depression. So, really cool history that we have as a company, really prideful of where we come from. Our company is one of the, is the largest privately-owned supermarket in Southern California. We currently operate 172 stores in San Diego, Riverside, San Bernardino, Orange, LA, current inventory counties. We most recently unveiled our newest logo, and if you happen to have a chance to pick up one of the flyers in the back, or see in the news, or some of our recent flyers, you'll see some of the new offerings that we have. So, it's not just about our new logo, we're trying to really identify with the communities that we serve in, and look at some of the needs and some of the current offerings, not just what we are seeing today, but really, really looking forward into the future. And so, we're trying to be a little more current and modern, and along with being current and modern is keeping some of our history and tradition. So, if you get a chance, I'd really like you to, you know, again, pick up one of those flyers, really see what we're about. I talk a little bit about tradition, so we have a longstanding tradition of not just doing business in the community, but really being a part of the community and serving the community altogether. We're members of Chambers of Commerce in every community that we serve, and just today, we became a member of the Alternated Chamber of Commerce. To date, Stater Brothers Markets, we also have a philanthropic arm, which is called Stater Brothers Charities, and through that, we've been able to contribute to countless organizations, and we help support hunger relief, children's wellbeing organizations, education, health, and most importantly, we help for our nation's veterans and the active service members that help serve our country. I talked a little bit about our brand and our offerings, so kind of stepping back on that, we are committed to meet the current and future needs of our communities. So, when I talk about meeting the needs, it kind of goes twofold. First off, if you've ever been to any of our stores, you know, thank you, and if you haven't, I kind of want to give you a little background of what we are and what we offer. We have a full-service meat department, we're actually one of the only chains in Southern California that have certified butchers working in each of those departments. working in each of those departments. And with that, you can get any specialty cut of meat that you'd like, if it's a special occasion. You could have those folks behind the counters cut you, you know, a rib roast, or a specific cut of steak, or anything that you would like specifically. And that's, that's really one of the things that we have unique to any of the other grocery stores out there. In addition, we have full-service seafood departments, which we could steam your fish for lunch, or dinner, or any occasion that you'd want, all you have to do is ask. We have a full-service sushi department, and we have, you know, just about any offerings that you desire in terms of sushi, and they could always make something specific for you if you, you know, want something a little special or something different, in addition to party trays and things like that. In addition, we have our produce department, which, you know, the one located off of Allen and Washington has an expanded organic section. We have cut fruit, so there's folks behind the counters, not just cutting individual single-serve portions of cut fruit, but we'd also do party trays and things like that for occasions. We have a full-service floral, so I was just talking with somebody earlier today and didn't realize that we could do specialty bouquets of flowers and balloon bouquets and things of that nature. We also have a full-service service deli that can meet any of your largest catering desires. You may have seen in the back, we have, you know, that's just a small portion of what we do and we could provide, you know, down to an individually, you know, individual sandwich or something for lunch, so something specific for you. We have a bakery that's full service, so make any of your cakes or anything for any special occasion. You know, we even have a Wells Fargo ATM, you know, for any of your banking needs. So that's just a small part of the offerings that we, you know, like to provide. But I think the more important thing that we like to offer to our communities is, you know, we understand that the most important part of us as a business operator in the community is outreach. We had the grand opening at our store off of Allen and Washington in November, and along with me today, I have David from our retail operations department, and I have Marissa from our public relations, and Kristy, she's actually the store manager at that location. So that opened back in November, and we've become somewhat established in Pasadena, and we've really come to the understanding that we realize that we need to reach out more to Altadena. You know, that was probably a big miss on our part, and that's part of the biggest reason why we're here today, is that we want to hear not just from the folks sitting here in this room, but, you know, the folks in the community to kind of help us along. You know, we don't have big roots in this area, and we do want to put the foot forward to try to, you know, see what else we could do. We've already begun some conversations with the school district and some other, you know, smaller organizations within Altadena, and we feel like we're heading in the right direction. But I think more than anything, I just wanted to reach out to let you know that we're here. We're here for the community. We're here to last. We're going to stick around for a little while, and we'll be at the back of the room for any questions that anybody has after the meeting. So feel free to reach out to any of us. Again, we have a representation from, you know, different parts of the company. That way, hopefully, we can answer any questions that you may have. And thank you for your time. Again, if you have any questions after, we'll welcome that.
Any questions? I'm going to start from this side and work my way around. So Councilmember Knapp?
Good evening. I'm Victoria Knapp. I'm in Census Tract 4601, which is just up the street from where you are, north at Allen and Altadena Drive-ish. I will say that Councilmember Markison and I have worked on this together. This has been a thorn in my side, really, since I went to the grand opening. I think that there was a failure on the part of your marketing team, or the person who looks at the demographics of the locations that you're opening, to note that your store is cited on three sides by Altadenans, and to also note that I used to live down the street from your store, when that store was not your store and it belonged to the prior owners, and I drove completely across town to avoid coming up the hill. That's when I lived in Pasadena. In Altadena, Altadenans know that we drive down hills a lot, so I do think it was a big mess, and I am very glad that you guys are here. I was at your grand opening ceremony. Altadena was not mentioned, the council was not invited, and I think that it really didn't help, especially in the part of, for the parts of Altadena that you serve. So I think it's a good, I think it's good that you're here. I've met the store manager more than once, although she may not remember, but that was right when you guys opened. So thanks so much for being here. I'm glad. I am also the PTA president at Altadena Arts Magnet, and Councilmember Markison and I have talked about the possibility for some collaborative work on the part of Stater Brothers with some of our local public schools. Just as a question, this came up really, actually recently, you were talking about the cut fruit. I had to do a spread of fruit for my teachers that were coming back to school. We just, school just started again a week ago. It didn't occur to me to ask, nor did anyone ask me, but I came into the store to get cut fruit as part of their breakfast spread. Could I have either in advance or at the moment of the time that I came in, requested specific cut fruit? So if I didn't want the established trays that were already prepared there, and I wanted, let's just say, just honeydew and just melon, or watermelon, could I have had a tray?
Absolutely.
Yeah. Okay. So I do think that to some of Council Markison's points along the way, there's just, I don't think anybody realizes the number of services you provide. I would have never known that I could have had a bouquet made specially, and I have come in and out of the store looking for a bouquet and leaving with nothing, so that's also good to know. So at any rate, I think those were the things that were front of mind. I know that we have, Diane and I have been over the sign issue a million and one times. The one that is very happy to engage Pasadena when you walk in, it's the big sign on the wall. As I've said to Councilmember Markison, I am not for removing that sign. I think that Pasadena did a great job in getting you there and getting you open and all of that. I do think that you may underestimate how it feels to Altadena, who was not invited to the grand opening, to see Pasadena splashed everywhere with not even a little like, eh, Altadena too. So I'm putting that out there again. We're used to being sort of stepchildren up here in the hill, so I get it. But it is, it does sort of feel a little, I don't know, discluding, I guess is the right word, uninclusive, whatever that word is. So anyways, thanks so much for being here. Good to see you again.
Well, first, I could make a quick comment. I apologize. The last thing we want is to be a thorn in anybody's side, and I do look forward to our collaboration. And, yeah, I'm very, very thankful for everyone here in this room, you know, to, again, allow us to be a part of this today. And we are exploring avenues for the sign, just so you know.
Thank you. Thank you.
Just know, Altadena's population is 45,000 strong.
Forty-five.
Forty-five, that's true.
Yeah.
That's a lot.
That's a lot.
And we're very vocal.
Okay, go ahead, Council.
Next question, Councilmember Zimi?
It is really not a question, but Councilmember Knapp, I appreciate your comments, because right after the grand opening, she had called, Bian was very, not very thrilled that Altadena was not represented. Having said that, Councilmember Markison, I'm really glad that this is happening. I know that a few years back, we used to recognize businesses from each census tract to try to have them share with the community what they have to offer. If you had not come in today, I would have not known that. And there's a lot of services that you provide that will be beneficial for us and for the other organizations that we represent. So this is something good, and I hope maybe, honorable chair, maybe that might be something that you may want to encourage us to do by census tract, maybe every council meeting, we recognize someone from the community in terms of businesses. Thank you.
Taking consideration. Thank you, Councilmember Zimi. Councilmember Sabala?
This is not a question, this is a statement. I will admit that friends and I regularly go to the concerts at Huntington, where you sit out in the lawn and listen to, or dance to music there, and we've been getting our sandwiches at your joint, and they've been really good.
I could have gone ahead and waited.
But the concerts are over till next year, so you'll see us, you'll see us coming and getting them there next year.
Oh, have sandwiches there. Any month, you might want one. You have to wait, you have to wait till June, yeah.
Next question, Councilmember Santangelo?
Yes, hi. I have some friends who visited yesterday. They loved what they got, especially the sushi, as I recall. I wanted to ask you, I worked for the carpenters union for 20 years. Your employees are union, correct?
Yes, they are.
Yeah, that's kind of a rarity around here, so I appreciate that very much. Thank you.
All of our stores.
I just wanted to say real quickly that, as Victoria said, we've been talking about this for a long time, and I just finally decided to get on line and call and ask for the CEO of the company, who, by the way, talked to me. So, and I think, I've said this to him, I've said it to you, that I think that, I think that says a whole lot about this company, the fact that the CEO would talk to me for 45 minutes and listen to me, and then as a result of that, get a whole bunch of people from the store involved to just try to make things right. So I encourage everybody to go, you know, I saw a recipe on TV that said you need boneless spare, boneless short ribs for the recipe, and they told me that's a special cut, and I went into the, into the store and said, you know, can I get boneless short ribs? And they said, well, one guy said, we'll take the bone out of the ones we had. I said, no, no, and the butcher, the real, you have real butchers. The real butcher came forward and said, we can get that for you, we will cut it, we will make it for you. And so, you know, if you think about where the closest butcher is, where you can get meat actually butchered up for you, and steamed fish, they will steam your fish for you to take home and eat. Anyway, the butchers are not, are far, few and far between around here, so if you have meat that you really want a specific cut, they will do that for you. Sometimes you need to tell them a couple days ahead, but. And so, anyway, I really thank you for coming. I know this is after hours for all you guys. I would encourage everybody to give you a chance and go in and see, and not hold it against you that we felt left out for a while. Thank you very much for coming. I don't know if anybody else had any other questions. Jeff?
Props on the meat department. The cowboy revises.
Thank you.
I love a good thick ribeye.
You'll find those day in and day out.
Yep. Prices are good, too.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Is that it? Any other questions? No? Okay, moving on. Thank you so much for coming, and. Thank you for reaching out to the community. I do have one question for the council. I have a member in the audience that's reached out to me that they're having some health issues right now, and so they would request if it's okay with the council if they can do their public comments right now, because they have to leave. Is that an issue for anybody, for one particular person? Can we go ahead and give them two minutes right now? Okay. This one is Berkeley Sloan and Annabelle Peterson, correct?
And my name is Annabelle. We are here to talk about global warming and how it is affecting our world today. Global warming is dangerously affecting our planet, and if we don't do something about it, our world will become uninhabitable. Not just a couple people need to help with global warming, it's the whole world that needs to change their lifestyles to help, to help with global warming. Here are a couple things that are happening because of global warming. Because the rising temperatures are melting the icebergs, the water levels are rising, and will soon start to flood cities and towns on the coast. Another thing that is happening because of global warming is that there are more severe weather conditions, like extreme heat and bad storms. These are some things that you can do to help global warming. Reuse and recycle, like using reusable containers and water bottles that could be made with reusable plastic or glass. Save water by turning off the tap while you're brushing your teeth or taking shorter showers. Raise awareness, like what we're doing. You can put posters or even post things online. Stop supporting companies that are using supplies and gases that are harmful to the environment. My dad and I had a pretty good idea. Our town of Altadena could be a green town, which speaks for itself. We could use reusable plastic or glass bottles in stores instead of plastic ones. It would help the environment, and you wouldn't have to buy a lot, because they're all a reusable product. Try to waste less food and eat the food that you buy, and cut down on your meat intake. There is something called mushroom packaging, which is an alternative to regular day packaging. Save electricity by turning off lights when you leave a room, and don't leave your phone plugged in when it's fully charged, for example. Another great thing to help global, to help stop global warming is to not use your car as much. Take the train or ride your bike. Even carpooling is better. Sure, it will take some getting used to, but for a cleaner earth, it's worth it. Thank you for listening and have a wonderful evening.
You made it within two minutes. And before you go away, I just wanted to mention that in public comments, you're given no more than two minutes, and as a council, we don't respond to public comments, but we will pass you on to the council member. That's your time. We will pass you on to the council member in your, in your census tract. So one, you can, if you'd like to reach out to your census tract rep, or they can reach back to you, plus Councilmember Wong, you might want to talk to her regarding safe streets and the committees we have on council, if you'd like to get more involved, because we want to encourage our youth to get more involved in our community and our town in general. So thank you for coming out.
Thank you.
Thank you for. Okay. Our second presentation is Altadena Library, item 5.2, and Katie Clark?
Hi. I have a quick presentation for you guys, so I don't know if we can bring down the screen and.
We can do that.
Make it happen. Awesome.
So if I, if I talk like this, do you guys all hear me? Then, yeah, Veronica, can you, Victoria, sorry. Sorry.
Okay. All right. All right. Well, thank you so much for inviting me tonight. My name is Katie Clark, and I'm one of the trustees at the Altadena Library, and I really appreciate the opportunity to come and speak to the council about what we have going on. We are in, I think what you might call a busy season at the Altadena Library District, and I wanted to come and give you guys just a quick status update about what we're doing, and also to ask for your input, your thoughts, as we go through this series of important processes. So we have right now a couple of major efforts underway. First, we're hiring a permanent director. Secondly, we're going through a strategic planning process. Third, we're undergoing our facilities master plan and capital improvements. Oh, that's much better. How about that? Napkins. And fourth, we're going to be moving into a process of redistricting, and if that sounds like a lot, it is, and I'm going to talk about all of it one at a time. So the exciting thing is all of these are happening kind of at once. We are in the process of doing all the things that have been basically kicked down the road for a while. We have a really engaged board, we have an interim director who's helping us, her name is Cindy Cleary, she was the former director of the Glendale Public Library System, and she's with us through this transition. I'm sure a lot of you guys in this room are among that hundred and three. And we really appreciated everybody's feedback. You can see sort of how it breaks down and what I think is interesting is that a quarter of the people who cared enough to click on the link and reply to our survey qualified themselves as infrequent library users, which I think is awesome because what it tells me is that there are people who care about the library, who value the library and its direction, who may not be going in every single day to check out books, but still value what it does. And we asked a lot of questions about what people wanted to see in a director, what qualities they thought were important, and we also asked for open feedback and we got a lot of really good, um, input. And I think one of the unifying themes that came out of all the feedback we got was how important it is that our new director be somebody who is engaged in the community and outward looking. And I can tell you that all of us on the board absolutely agree, it's a really important quality in our process of selection as well. So we've had seventeen people apply for the job of those. We've identified five first-round candidates who will be interviewing on Thursday. Finalists will go through a follow-up interview within a few weeks and so our goal is to have a permanent director, um, who meets all of our many and varied needs as a special district onboard by the end of September. And I think we have a really good shot of making that happen. At the same time, we're going through our strategic planning process. So the library is in a real moment of transition and we're taking that opportunity to figure out where we're headed, what we're gonna look like as a library, how we serve this community and how we can do that even better than we have before. And so we're trying to involve absolutely everybody, that's library experts, the board, community participants, the staff, and this is one of the reasons I'm so excited to be here today, partner and peer community organizations like you guys, because one of the things that I think it's fair to say is that as an institution, we at the Altadena Library have not necessarily done as good a job as we could have of engaging with town council and building a really strong collaborative working relationship. That's something we want to do a whole lot better in the future and it's something that we're definitely having top of mind in a lot of our planning process. So, I want to take just like two minutes and talk about kind of how to frame all of this mentally, because for a lot of us, the first thing you think about when you think about libraries is shh, right? Like you come in and you're quiet, don't make any noise. But libraries are changing and a lot of us have a mental model of a library that is not necessarily where libraries are in their sort of form and function today. So we're gonna take a really quick run through what's happened in libraries because I think it will help you understand why we're asking some of the questions we're asking and why we're making some of the decisions that we are. So, the image that a lot of us have, I think of a library, is library as a book palace, right? These grand architectural, beautiful rooms, you think about like the reading room at the New York Public Library, piles and piles of books, the idea that all knowledge in the world could be contained in a book and you come in and you find the book you want and you're quiet and you read it and it's just this very like literacy-driven, reading-driven, book-driven process. And that is something certainly that libraries still embody, but it's not the only thing. So, why are we not really just doing this anymore? Well, because the internet happened, basically. And so, what we're in now is phase two. Phase two, we're thinking like, this is probably when I started using libraries mostly, when I was, we're talking like the eighties and nineties. This is the library's information center, you're thinking about computers and digitization and getting the entire internet in contact with people and this was, you guys probably remember the process when Google was gonna digitize every book in the world, right? Which didn't happen, but it's really emblematic of the idea that if there is knowledge somewhere, it ought to be digitized, it ought to be accessible. That mental model of a library, again, left a lot of people behind, didn't include a lot of, um, important things that libraries do now, but it was a major change, a major shift in how people thought about libraries. The third phase really is something that I think you can look around, the two thousands, I think it's fair to say that this is probably where our library has been for a while, which is thinking about, the library is a community hub and you can think about all the libraries that have coffee shops in them, right? And that's sort of emblematic, the idea that it's a public space, you can go there, you can be with people, it's sort of a, a free democratic institution and that, just as important as books and just as important as computers, is this ability to assemble freely and do other things. So everything from concerts to poetry readings to coffee shops to maker spaces are really kind of what libraries are all about. And what happens in, you know, thinking about a library this way, as a community hub, is people start to go like, well, what is a, what is a library? It's very confusing, is it a coffee shop, is it a Google, is it books, like why, what do, what are we doing? It's very confusing and also asks, makes people ask the question, like what are, what do we really need libraries for? And so, one of the things that we're adopting as a board of trustees and as a staff and as a, as an institution, is the idea of the library as movement. So what that means is, the fact that the library is really the one place in society where we bring people of all ages, all backgrounds, all socioeconomic levels together, and we do that for the exclusive purpose of making their lives better. It's the only thing in our democratic society that does that, is the library. And so, libraries need to do all of the things that we've, you know, kind of experimented with. We need to have these books and these, you know, amazing resources that are only in print. We need to have access to digital collections and online resources, we need to have spaces for free assembly, but even more than that, we need to help members of a community come together because as we get more and more and more separate from one another, the library is one place where we can really draw a community back together. And that's one of the organizing principles that's driving us in the strategic planning process, is how can we build community, how can we make that happen? So, we're asking questions like, how can our library district help build a healthy community for all of Altadena? And that means all of these different areas, educationally, economically, in terms of our civic health and engagement, our personal health, our cultural identity. We're asking lots of different kinds of questions, how we can be better at helping people learn from, you know, early pre-K, early childhood education, all the way to seniors, to people who are maybe even housebound and can't get to our library, how can we reach out, find people where they are and help them be lifelong learners? We're thinking about ways in which we as a library district can help foster economic health in our community. How can we help people build skills, get better jobs, grow economic development in Altadena? I don't think that we will be able to single-handedly bring a Trader Joe's here, but short of that, I think we can do a lot in terms of building the economic health in this community and building partnerships with the chamber, building partnerships with business is a big part of that. This one is one of the ones that I think I personally care most about, how can we foster constructive civic engagement? How do we create an empowered population? I had a conversation with somebody who found out that you could drop off your absentee ballot at the library and we talked about it, we talked through the logistics and he called me later and he said, you know what, I am sixty-five years old, I've never voted in my life, that was the first time I voted, and the fact that I could just walk in the library and drop off my ballot was the reason that I was able to do it. And I think a lot of people don't know what the library has to offer and we haven't fully explored or imagined all the ways in which we could help create civic engagement. Same thing for personal health, how do we build access to healthcare, foster healthy living, link people to resources? Now obviously, as a library, we are not a point-of-service provider, right? We're not saying you can come get healthcare at the library, but what we can do is connect people with ideas. That's the work libraries have always done and it's the work we're gonna continue to do. Sometimes it's gonna look different from books and programming, but it's gonna be just as important. And finally, how can we foster connection to the arts and culture? How can we celebrate and lift up the diverse parts of our community and make sure that we are representing just how vibrant and exciting and interesting and different we all are in Altadena? So, this is sort of what we're going through, we've had a town hall, I know some of you guys were there and I really appreciate you attending. We had a great turnout for our first town hall where we were asking questions exactly like this. And this process is gonna continue over the course of the next several months. We've got a goal to have, um, a final strategic plan adopted by November and as you, as you saw before, we have a new director coming on, so the goal is that once they're onboard, they're gonna help us with this planning process and be engaged and be involved and bring their own ideas, perspectives and energy to it so that we can move forward as an institution. So, how can you get involved? Well, we've got a couple more things happening, we've got another town hall in November, we're gonna run an online community survey, very similar to the one we did about the director, but asking about sort of the library writ large. That'll be up during the month of September and in just like a few minutes, because I'm gonna ask you guys some questions. So, these last two items will move a little more quickly because they are a little bit further in the future. We're going through the process of developing our facilities master plan. Um, as you know, the main library has a bunch of ADA compliance issues, it is not accessible, it is not easy to use for anybody who has any kind of mobility challenges or needs accommodation, like it's just, it's super problematic. And so, as a board, one of our top priorities was making sure that every single library facility we have is totally accessible to every member of the community. We have a lot of deferred maintenance to deal with, we're gonna fully overhaul the Bob Lucas branch and we've got, yeah, right? It's awesome. And it can, that library is so, is so amazing and we can do so much more with it than we have and so we're holding more programming there, we're getting excited about thinking how we can, we can envision it. So if you have ideas about Bob Lucas, about the main, let us know, because we wanna, we wanna really be creative with it. So where we are right now is we are having architecture firms, um, that are bidding and they're gonna get back to us with some plans and that probably will have a plan in hand, I'm thinking by, mm, spring, like by the, the early spring of, of 2020 and then we're gonna have to figure out where to find all the money to do that. But with a plan, we're gonna be able to stage out that work, we've got a capital budget, we're gonna need to come up with some more money to do it, but it's, it's a huge priority and we want to do it right. So, the last thing that I want to talk about is a little bit off in the future and you guys are the first public audience to hear about this and I think that's entirely appropriate given your role in our local government. So, the library right now as a special district votes in an at-large system, right? So everybody in Altadena votes for all the trustees and like the top two or the top three vote-getters are the people who are seated. And we do it midterm and presidential election year, so the next one will be in 2020, 22, 24, and so on, and we stagger it, so we do two one year, three the next year, and so on and so forth. So, one of the things that's, uh, that I discovered quite recently, um, is that at-large election systems are pretty much a prima facie violation of the California Voting Rights Act. So the California Voting Rights Act says, hey, guess what, running elections like this kind of inherently disenfranchises people. It tends to inherently disenfranchise communities of color, it tends to inherently disenfranchise lower, um, income groups, any, um, what they call communities of interest, right? So like separate language groups, any kind of non-dominant voter group tends to do really poorly in at-large voting systems and it tends to be not representative. So you end up with elected representatives who don't necessarily look very much like the community they represent and we think that's a huge problem. So, special districts all over the state of California are being sued and spending, well, some governments are spending millions of dollars, the city of Santa Monica is going through, they've spent nine million dollars so far on their lawsuit to hold on to at-large elections. And so we as a board said, forget that, let's be proactive about it and transition. So we're gonna do that, we've adopted a resolution of intention and after the most recent census data comes out in 2021, we'll begin the process of switching from an at-large to a by-district election system for the 2022 elections. It's something that I think is hugely important and I also hope will build better community representation so that all of Altadena is represented up on that board of trustees and we have people from all over town who are talking about what they care about. So, these are the questions I want to leave you guys with. How can we be a better partner to the town council? What do you want to see in a library district? Anything you'd like me to take back and share with the board of trustees, the director, the staff? We really care about what you think as a council, we are excited to be a partner with you and we want to build that relationship moving forward. So thank you so much for your time and I'm probably way over my time limit, but I really appreciate it.
Yeah, we, we are running tight for time now. So I have to make this very quick, uh, due to, we have one more presentation and, uh, we, we have to close really early, so, um, my only thing is, is there any, i- if we can take most questions offline, if you have them for the library, but if the coun, any council member right now has a quick question before we move on to the next presentation so we can give them time as well. Go ahead, council member now.
The library in a long time and so, um, and there was turmoil at our library, so I applaud you for coming in, this is, a lot of exciting work is been going on and is going to happen and so thanks so much for coming in.
Any other council member have a quick question?
I have a quick, how do we get those questions? Can you, we get that?
I, I, yes, and I will, I'd be happy to send you the presentation as well so you have a copy of all of that.
So two things, I'm sorry, like it sounds like we're rushing, but we are excited to partner with the library moving forward. Two, if you have any information that you wish to share that we can post, if you can send it off to, in a PDF to council member Wong and we can make sure it's posted on our website. You have my contact information and anybody else's, so make sure you, you forward a, a presentation and what we can give, and your information so we can get to you back.
Yeah, okay, thank you so much, I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, next one, LA County. Update on the accessible dwelling units, ADUs, another housing ordinance. We have Elia Scott for deputy regional planning and?
Uh, my name is Soyeon Choi.
Okay.
Yeah. Uh, thanks again, all the council members and everyone here today, uh, for having us tonight and for the opportunity to, for us to talk about, uh, the new housing ordinances. Uh, my name is Soyeon Choi and my colleague here, uh, Ayla Scott, we are both in, um, the LA County Department of Regional Planning, General Plan Development and Housing Section, which means that, uh, we work on the countywide ordinances related to the housing and equity in the zoning code that applies to the unincorporated areas in the county. So tonight we'll be discussing the new four, um, housing ordinances initiated by the board of supervisors last year, um, and some of them are actually intended to implement, um, the existing state law. So the ordinances will provide, uh, requirements and criteria that'll encourage housing affordability and preservation of existing affordable housing in the time of the, um, housing crisis. Um, the idea is that developers, um, need to contribute their fair share to addressing the affordable, uh, affordability crisis and also provide, um, options, um, give, uh, give property owners options on, uh, different kinds of, um, housing. The ordinances will start public hearing, uh, one at a time, uh, next year, 2020, and we'd like, if, and, um, so we've laid out some flyers, um, informational sheets out there, uh, on the table, uh, the, the one that you saw as you walked in. Um, so if you'd like to receive updates on these ordinances, uh, please, uh, sign in, uh, your name, contact info and mark yes on the sign sheet. And also however your, uh, meeting format allows for, we would really appreciate to hear back, uh, hear your feedback about these ordinances, any comments, uh, any questions. And so, I'll talk about, uh, by right ordinance and inclusionary housing ordinance first and then I'll, uh, hand it off to Ayla, uh, for her to go over the rest of the two, uh, ordinances and she'll also, we're also aware that you guys are interested in hearing more about the accessory dwelling units ordinance that has been already adopted, so Ayla, uh, will talk about, uh, talk more about it later during our presentation. Um, so, uh, first of all, by right housing ordinance, um, so the goal of this by right housing, housing ordinance-
by the Board of Supervisors last year. And some of them are actually intended to implement the existing state law. So the ordinances will provide requirements and criteria that'll encourage housing affordability and preservation of existing affordable housing in the time of the housing crisis. The idea is that developers need to contribute their fair share to addressing the affordability crisis and also provide options, give property owners options on different kinds of housing. The ordinances will start public hearing one at a time next year, 2020. And we'd like, if, and, so we've laid out some flyers, informational sheets out there on the table, the one that you saw as you walked in. So if you'd like to receive updates on these ordinances, please sign in your name, contact info, and mark "yes" on the sign sheet. And also, however your meeting format allows for, we would really appreciate to hear back, hear your feedback about these ordinances, any comments, any questions. And so I'll talk about by right ordinance and inclusionary housing ordinance first, and then I'll hand it off to Ayla for her to go over the rest of the two ordinances. And she'll also, we're also aware that you guys are interested in hearing more about the accessory dwelling units ordinance that has been already adopted. So Ayla will talk about, talk more about it later during our presentation. So first of all, by right housing ordinance. So the goal of this by right housing ordinance is to allow a streamlined review for multifamily housing development in the zones where currently require a conditional use permit, which requires notification and public hearing. So for example, we generally require a conditional use permit or CUP for residential and mixed-use developments in commercial zones. However, there is a, already a state law, which is SB 35, that requires local restrictions to allow certain multifamily housing development by right, meaning there's no public hearings and no notification. And this ordinance is to implement these changes at the state level, but in a way that makes sense in our context. And please note that we are just focused on the areas where appropriate for housing, which means that areas outside of very high fire hazard severity zones or hillside management area, as well as areas fronting highway or public street. The next one is the inclusionary housing ordinance, which requires certain new residential developments to set aside affordable units at a certain percentage to create mixed-income development. So SB 35 already have certain affordable housing set-aside requirements. And in this ordinance, the requirement will only apply to the projects with more than 10 units in total. So for Altadena, we are looking at a 10% set-aside requirements for for-sale housing developments and a 15% to 20% set-aside requirement for rental developments, depending on the income level. Just with a caveat that it's subject to change with updated feasibility studies. So currently, we are exploring alternative ways that a developer can meet requirements, such as creating the required affordable units at a different location within the same submarket or a payment of a fee that would be equal to the cost of subsidizing a new unit and other... And in order to ensure the finance of feasibilities for the developers, we are looking at incentives such as density bonus, expedited processing, and development standard modifications. So these are the first two ordinances. And I'll hand it off to Ayla to go over the rest two and also talk about the accessory dwelling unit.
Okay, thank you, Soyun. My name is Ayla Scott. I'm Soyun's colleague at Regional Planning, General Plan and Housing Section. So I'll quickly go through a couple more of the newer housing ordinances and then shift to accessory dwelling units. So another one of those four housing ordinances that Soyun mentioned that was, were initiated by the Board of Supervisors last year. They include the Affordable Housing Preservation Ordinance, which is focused on preserving existing lower-cost housing and preventing displacement of renters when new development comes in. So for example, requiring replacement of existing housing that is occupied by lower-income tenants, if those units will be demolished to make room for new development, or if the units will be converted to condominiums, for example. Another option is giving existing tenants or nonprofit organizations first dibs on making an offer on a unit or matching a competing offer, for example, if a rental building is converting to condominium. And finally, the last of the four new ordinances that the board directed us to create is called the Interim and Supportive Housing Ordinance. It's one of many strategies the county is pursuing to address homelessness. As you know, the 2019 homeless count was recently published, and there was a 12% increase in homelessness in LA County, bringing the total to about 60,000. And so the goal with this ordinance was to prevent people from becoming homeless in the first place or cycling in and out of homelessness. So it's called interim and supportive housing. Interim housing includes shelters where people can stay up to six months and transitional housing, where people can stay for up to two years. Supportive housing is rental housing, but instead of just being rental housing, it has wraparound onsite services, case management, social workers, et cetera, who are there to manage the property and basically oversee the welfare of the residents. So with this ordinance, the board directed the county to get into compliance with state laws that regulate how we permit such types of developments, streamline review and provide incentives for supportive housing, allow conversion of existing hotels and motels to transitional or supportive housing, and encourage development of interim housing. Additionally, the county is looking at ways to address people living in vehicles, particularly in RVs. This is an issue in many communities. So the county is preparing what's called a safe parking program, which allows vehicles to park in designated parking lots overnight with onsite management, access to bathrooms and supportive services for the vehicle occupants to try to get them into permanent housing. Currently, this is already, it's allowed by county code to allow overnight parking in parking lots. Sometimes, for example, a church will express interest in using its parking lot for this purpose. So county code already allows it, but where this ordinance would come in is to create standards for those lots to ensure the safety of the vehicle occupants and minimizing the impact of that lot on surrounding uses if a property owner were to decide that they wanted to move forward with doing something like that. An additional strategy to address RV dwelling, the county is considering allowing extended stays at RV parks. Currently, in our code, we have a restriction on staying at an RV park for more than 90 days. So this ordinance may extend that time limitation so that RVs can have a place to go for a longer period of time. So that, so those are the four new housing ordinances that the board asked us to create last year. We'll have the first drafts of those shortly in September, and then we can always come back and do a deeper dive into any one of them, if you like, in future meetings. And these ordinances, like Soyun said, will be going to hearing next year. So there'll be a lot of opportunities for feedback, and we're expecting many revisions until these actually get to hearing. So I'll step back a little bit and talk about accessory dwelling units, or ADUs. This ordinance was adopted by the board this year and took effect May 30. And an accessory dwelling unit, also known as a granny flat, a backyard house, is a full, a full unit with a kitchen and a bathroom. And state laws changed in 2017, so the county recently updated its ADU ordinance to comply with state law, which limits the degree to which the county can regulate ADUs, or it kind of spells out what's dictated by state and what the county can regulate. So the county tried where it could to kind of tailor those regulations to our local context while still working within those legal boundaries. So essentially, in a nutshell, the ordinance that went to effect in May, outside of very high fire hazard severity zones, overall, it's easier to build or legalize an ADU, including a garage conversion, than it was just a few years ago. And actually, I've brought with me a summary of the standards. It's a black-and-white table sheet. Dorothy's holding it up, but it's available at the front, which basically lists out the basic requirements that a planner would look at if you were to come into one of our offices asking about the, you know, the different standards that the ADU has to meet as far as things like parking, you know, height limitations, et cetera. So some of the highlights. Floor area of the ADU and height are regulated by the CSDs, as well as other requirements that are not specifically regulated by the ADU ordinance. And then there's no parking for the ADU itself that is required outside of a very high fire hazard severity zone. If you're in a very high fire hazard severity zone, then one ADU parking space is required, unless it falls into one of the many exemptions that state law carved out for ADU parking, so transit proximity or existing space conversion. If it is in a very high fire hazard severity zone, there are additional requirements for minimum street width and access to a highway. And anywhere in the unincorporated, ADUs are not allowed to be used for Airbnb or short-term rentals. So we have more information on our website. We have a dedicated ADU page, which is planning.lacounty.gov/ADU for more information about that. So, so that's, I know we stuffed a lot into a few minutes, but, you know, we're happy to take questions.
Question from the council member, Markinson, to start off.
Yeah, hi. Just real quickly. So on the, on the items that you're still working through, do you know if Supervisor Barker has designated anybody from her office to, that Altadena can coordinate through?
Yeah, so, so probably your best contacts at the supervisor's office are, I think, probably Chris Perry.
Okay.
I think they, I would start with Chris Perry.
Okay.
Yeah, that would be a good start. There may be other folks that deal with different things. They have somebody who's dedicated specifically to homelessness. So if it's an issue related to that angle, you know, he may consult with her or bring her in, but he's a good point person on housing matters.
Okay, yeah, I think the Land Affairs Committee would like to sort of understand everything that's going on, how it affects us.
Sure, sure.
The, the other thing was that for the ADUs, you mentioned CSD. So I don't think our CSD addresses those. And so has there been some discussion about updating CSDs at all? About, you know, not to stop them, just to make sure that we're in keeping with all the regulations?
Yeah, I mean, to the degree that you have, for example, I'm not sure exactly how it works, but if you have, for example, even if you're not, say, you could, you could regulate those things specifically for ADUs. But if you have something in place, like typically, CSDs have something like a lot coverage maximum.
Right.
Or gross structural area maximum. So that would be, you know, currently, the way a planner would look at the CSD is to say, well, this ADU is contributing to that lot coverage maximum that's in the CSD or the GSA MAX. So, you know, even if there's no specific mention or size limitation, it would, it would contribute towards whatever the existing max is. But, you know, if that was, if that was something, if that was a high priority to call them out specifically, then really, the, as long as the CSD were to stay within the basic minimums and maximums that are, that are set by the state, so the, you know, as long as it didn't go over, it didn't go under, then there's, you know, there would be room for something like that.
Okay, and if somebody suspects that one of these ADUs, because I know there are more and more of them that are being built, is, really is being used as an Airbnb, then we just call code enforcement, is that right?
Yes, yes, and actually, so yes, zoning enforcement. The other thing that you should know is that the county is working on an Airbnb ordnance, well, I shouldn't call it Airbnb officially. It's called short-term rental.
Right.
Because they're not the only company. Short-term rental ordinance, which is seeking to regulate kind of very specifically the operations of these countywide, not just for ADUs, but for all the, you know, all the types of homes that are rented out for short-term. So if you, if you're interested in that, I can put you in touch with the team that's working on that.
That'd be great, yeah. I have my card here for you.
Sure, yeah.
Just a last thing, just so everybody's really, 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 really clear. The ADU pieces have already gone through the supervisors, right? And are etched in cement at the moment, for the most part.
Yeah.
The ADU piece.
Yeah.
These other pieces that you were talking about are still under consideration.
Very much so.
And you're looking for feedback.
Yeah, so these...
It's not real code yet.
No.
Right.
So these were, the board asked us to do this, directed us, I should say, to do this last year. So ever since then, we've been in the kind of research phase, what, you know, what are our legal obligations? What are the legal parameters that we can work within? You know, what are, how are other jurisdictions responding to some of these state mandates? What do we, you know, what are we looking at here? So it's, we're still kind of in that phase, and we'll be releasing some kind of initial policy drafts, most likely sometime next month.
Okay.
But we're still at least probably a year out from, from any hearings.
So I would encourage everybody that comes in really, really late in the process and says, oh, my God, I didn't know. We're being told now that there's a process in place to put some new ordinances in that are in to help low-income housing and all of that. And now is the time to start reading and thinking, and we'll try to get everything, you know, we'll try to get stuff out to people as we get it so they can make comments now, which is when you're looking for it, and not once it goes through the supervisor's office and everybody goes, oh, no, which is what we find. So, yeah, thank you.
I have a quick question. In regards of somebody is contemplating an ADU, that does change the structure or the footprint of the property itself. Is the tax assessor going to reassess the property and the value, and they'll have a new tax assessment assigned to it?
So typically, with an ADU, the assessor doesn't reassess the entire property. They just assess the value of that new construction, what was added. And so not the whole property.
And add it to the base value of the property when it was purchased?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Well, I don't know if it's exactly when it was...
Or, or, plus the percentages raise increases since then?
So, yeah. But if you like, if you have more assessment questions, I can put you in touch with the assessor, and they can tell you how they appraise, you know, how they calculate that. But it's not the entire property.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for council members? Question?
Are you providing loans or anything like that for this construction?
Yeah, so, so the county, you may have heard, because it was widely reported in the media, the county decided to do a very limited experiment with, with grants. Well, loan, it was a loan. It was called, it was structured as like a forgivable loan for AD, for ADU construction, up to $75,000. It was a very limited experiment to like a handful of, of family, or, not developers, homeowners in the county. And so that period kind of ended a while back. There's, I believe, one of those is under construction currently. But actually, it's possible that the county would renew the program and try to expand it. It was the first time the county had done something like that for ADUs, so they kind of just dipped their toe just to see how it would work and what lessons could be learned from it to try to improve upon the program if they want to expand it. And they might expand the program and offer, you know, in the next round, you know, make it broader. And so one of the things the county and the city of LA are working on is, is a joint informational website about ADUs so that people from, you know, a joint informational website about ADUs, so that people from, you know, different jurisdictions can actually go there as kind of a first step if they're considering building one, to see what are the basic parameters, what are the typical loan products that are out there that people use? There may be some kind of, you know, specialty programs that may pop up here and there, but, but the counties, we can keep you posted on that too, there's, there's some work being done to design kind of a more robust informational hub for this kind of thing, yeah.
Aside from those little cards that were distributed, how did that information get to the community?
So really, it was-
And who got those grants?
So really, it was basically the news media, I mean, you know, we, you know, the planning department is not even administering the, the loan, but, you know, I, we got flooded with phone calls about it, and so it was, it popped up and, you know, it, it was at the board for approval, and it, it just spread like wildfire, so there was a consultant hired to do outreach, but in, in the end, the word had gotten out so much that there were hundreds and hundreds of, of inquiries, and only a handful of, of, you know, loans available, but, but it could be expanded broader next time, yeah, yeah.
Okay, council member one?
So I just have a elementary, or if, clarification perhaps, so if somebody builds, converts their two-car garage, or one-car garage into an ADU, then they don't have to have covered parking anymore?
So-
If they haven't-
Yeah, so they would, they would still have to replace the parking on-site for the main house, for the primary residence, you still need two spaces, but they would be able to not be covered, yeah, and then depending on where the ADU is located, if it's in a high-fire zone or not, then that would dictate whether parking is required for the ADU itself as well.
Okay, and then one last question, since we're waiting to see what happens with the short-term rentals, if people are renting, do they need to apply for an ADU, or what, is there-
No, because the, the, you, you wouldn't be allowed to, to use that ADU for a short-term rental, you know, even whether it was permitted or not, that it, it's just not a permitted use.
What would they do?
So-
Yeah, that comes under a new, a different thing.
So they would, yeah, I mean, you know, eventually when the county has a more comprehensive approach to registration of short-term rentals, then, you know, they would be subject to that, whether or not it was an ADU, yeah.
Cool, thank you.
Thank you.
Sure.
We are running short on time, so if we can round things up now, thank you. Council member-
Yeah, I just wanna, I'm kind of curious, I read the motion that 60 million was invested for, for affordable housing, I want to know what the criteria was for determining who received that money? Was it a certain organization maybe, or, or a certain area? Did Altadena receive any of that?
Can I borrow that real quick? I just want to, I just want to see, so, oh, okay.
I guess wouldn't that be covered on what goes, how much goes to unincorporated?
Yes, so, so 60 million, and yes, that is for unincorporated, in terms of how much, how much ended up in Altadena, I don't know, but I think the board office might be able to tell you of, of this funding, what so far has been distributed for projects in Altadena, they may be able to track down that information, so I would work with them to find out exactly.
In general, do you know how it was spent?
So, so this is for housing, is my understanding, so the difference between this set of funds and some of the countywide taxes that you've heard of, like Measure H, for example, that was largely to fund services, and this is, this is mostly for, for housing, actually, actually building the housing. But if you like, I can, I can follow up with some more information, there's been, this program has to provide reports for where the, of that allocation, where, what kinds of programs it's going to, and so that is something we can certainly find out for you and try to, try to at least get you the latest report in terms of how this budget broke down. As far as locational, that I, that I don't, I don't know exactly in terms of exactly by community, but a sense of the overall budget breakdown is probably something we can get you if you're interested.
Can, can you leave us your information, so if any council members are moving forward have questions, they can contact you, because we really have to kind of move along at this point.
Yeah, Dorothy invited me, so-
I could share.
Can you share? Great, okay, excellent, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate you coming up here and spending the time with us.
Of course, of course.
Okay, moving on, item number six, the community reports, item number six, one, LA County Department of Parks and Rec, Sam Estrada. And again, we're, I apologize for us running a little bit late, but we got a lot of information out today, so.
Hello, and good evening, everybody, I'll make this quick. Loma Alta, they wrapped up their summer camp August 16th, it was full of fun activities, they did swimming and field trips, they implemented a new and improved esteem program, which presented a creative way to introduce environment, science, technology, engineering, arts and mathematics to the kids outside of school. They also launched a new teen program this summer called Our Spot, which focuses on empowering teens to reach their full potential and guide them through, guide them and make positive life decisions. We also coordinated a Tiny Top program for three- to five-year-olds, and they did field trips and activities with them all throughout the summer. We are currently enrolling in the, for the after-school program at Loma Alta, primarily the kids do come from Avison, Odyssey, and Almo Forte, so it's $20 a week, and some of the kids have started, and I know that next week they will be in, taking on the rest of the kids from the after-school program. We have a flag football program that's going to be starting up August 26th, and it's for three-to-five-year-olds and six-to-eight-year-olds, it's $65 for the program. We also have a cheer program that's going to start up for our county, it's all throughout the entire county, for Parks in the North, South, and East Agency, and it's $40, and it's for youth, boys and girls, four to 17 years of age, and it goes from August until January of 2020. As I said, for our Tiny Top program, it's for ages three to five, and it's $30 a week, and it's free for those that do qualify for our Community Development Block grant, it's Monday through Thursday from 8:45 to 11:45, and they teach the kids their colors, they work with them on development and self-control and cooperating with children and adults, and it's very constructive and creative, and the teachers that work with the kids are very attentive to the kids, and it's been going on for quite a while now, and it's an award-winning program that I'm very proud of, and that we've been going on now over 20 years at Loma Alta Park. We did an astronomy night this past week, or actually a couple weeks ago, at Farnsworth Park, and it was a very well-run program, we're looking to do a lot more of these programs, especially with Reggie, thank you for helping me coordinate that, that was fantastic, I think it helped too that our lights at the tennis court are down, so, those, those LED lights would have kind of ruined it, but we're looking to do things like this, just to bring the community out, it's a great thing that we're, that he's helped me and the supervisor, Alejandro, at Farnsworth Park, so we appreciate the connection between the town council and the Parks and Recreation. We did also hold the National Night Out on August 6th, and that was a fantastic event, it was very well put together and very well attended. Farnsworth Park is also holding an after-school program, they started it yesterday, and it goes on through the school year, and it's $30 per week, and they pick up the kids from Rosebud Academy, and it's a great program that they have there, and we appreciate the, the school that we pick up from over there, and we also have our tennis program down at Loma Alta Park with, with the Badon Tennis Academy, there's a lot of, a lot of programs that she does offer, I know we're constrained with time, so I won't go into those, but if you're interested, you can contact Loma Alta about tennis lessons for youth and adults, and it's both intermediate and advanced lessons that she does offer. I do want to thank the town council for my time, and it was a busy summer for us in the Altadena area, we still have this concert series that's going on at Farnsworth Park, and last week was really good, the week before was amazing, I think that was one of the biggest concerts I've ever seen since the platters were up there, I think that was like in the early 90s, but it was a great event that we did have, that we have up there at Farnsworth Park, and we appreciate the rotary and everybody that's part of our summer concert series. Just a heads up, we will be doing, I know Parks After Dark did in the beginning of August, however, we be, will be doing a winter Parks After Dark, and we will, we will be planning for that, starting next month, we got the information today, so we'll, we will be doing a snow day at Loma Alta, and we will be doing a Parks After Dark, and I will have more information to come very soon, because we will have the information by October, so, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Item number six-two, Chamber of Commerce, Doug Cauliflow.
Thank you, just a couple of things, I think most everybody in the room is aware that each January or the Chamber of Commerce honors a, the Altadena Citizen of the Year, and in that light, we're gearing up for that, that process, probably right after Labor Day, nomination forms will be available and instructions on our website, so start giving that some thought, look and keep your eyes and ears open to the community for suitable community members for that wonderful process. What's suitable? We don't, Billy said I had a short window to talk tonight, so. Secondly, in the fall, we also look to the community for members interested and, and serving and, and contributing to the community via the Board of Directors for our Chamber of Commerce, so that also, there is a statement of information form, I, I don't like to call it an application, that's also be available on our website right around Labor Day, okay? So again, if you're interested, and know anybody who's interested, like to get a little more involved in the community, we'd love to hear from you. Thirdly, we have a mixer scheduled for Thursday, September 26th, at Montecarlo, there are some flyers on the back, or there, I dropped some off when I came in, 5:00 to 7:00 PM, it's free to chamber members, non-members are certainly welcome, and there is a $5 charge. And then lastly, on, I believe it's a Wednesday, October 16th, at the Town and Country Club we'll have a power breakfast, and our guest will be Assemblyman Chris Holden, and I believe, I'll have the details out in the flyer very shortly, that's probably an 8 o'clock start. Okay, that's all I have, thank you very much.
That's 8:00 AM, correct?
Yes, 8:00 AM. Breakfast, Billy, it was breakfast. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much, Doug. And congratulations on your new member today. Let's say to him. Okay, moving on, general public comments, we have one general public comment, Francisco Vargas, and we apologize to keep you waiting, it's been a long meeting, so.
Hello, thank you for having me today, so I work for America's Job Center of California, so we are a community resource, we're known as a one-stop, I also just joined the Chambers of Commerce, thank you Veronica, I really appreciate it, so don't want to take too much of your time, so I'm a business service rep, so I engage with the community, businesses, individuals who are looking for gainful employment, so our center offers county-funded services, which is training services, career services, and also for the employers who are looking, the businesses who are looking for these candidates, we do have talent, so our Alhambra, East LA, all over Southern California, we have America's Job Center, where you can, you know, find us and we can assist you with these, you know, services that we do offer. So if you need any more information, I'll be in the back and give you one of my business cards, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to item number eight, committee reports, I would first like to say that we're at 8.1 Land Use Committee, the new-appointed chair, Diana Markinson, who's continuing as chair as well for the Land Use Committee, I'll pass it over to council member Markinson.
Thank you, so I'll try to go quickly, we had our meeting two weeks ago tonight, we had a couple of presentations, I would like to say that for the September meeting, we are expecting to take action on Bulgarieni, the work is going on now to get ready for that vote and get all the information out to the committee members. The other thing is that we have, I don't know if you all are aware, but the, the town council members have first choice at being on the Land Use Committee if they would like to or not, in, this year, we have two town council members who are not going to be sitting on the Land Use Committee, one is from Census Track 4602, and the other one is from 4603.02. There is a process, as outlined in the, our bylaws, of how we go about finding people, but I wanted to make that announcement, and please ask anybody that might be interested from those, you have to live in one of those two census tracts, and please be in contact with me, and I will be able to share with you the details of what the process is and what we need to do to go through, and the process changes based on how many people are interested. So I encourage everybody, you heard what we talked about tonight with the county on ADUs and all those other things, those are some of the things that we work on in the Land Use Committee, which is why I asked all the questions. So, thank you very much, and please go ahead and, and if you know anybody that might be interested from one of those two census tracts, let me know directly, and I will make sure that everybody has the right process, that's all I have.
Is that it? Okay, moving on to the last topic, section number nine, Census Track reports, and again, we have to make this quick, I'm going to start with Census Track 4602, which is 9.1, council member Markinson touched on it, the current activity is the Bulgarieni CUP for a beer and wine license, just to, to update everybody, the process is going really well right now, I've been in contact with Bulgarieni, canvassing and outreach has almost, well, started already, almost, it should be almost complete within the next week, is, is what I was trying to say, encompasses two census tracts, so encompasses Census Track 4601 and 4602. If you have any questions and concern, please contact one of us in one of these census tracts, but that is actually aligned and going, and everything is covered currently. The next thing I want to say is the Palm Street Development, the hearing in the 17th of July at downtown, the hearing officers did pass with, with some conditions at that particular meeting, the, although the conditions that was requested was posted on the, by the hearing officers, but it was passed on, it has since gone into appeals, and I believe the appeals will be in late October, is when it's up next for the Board of Supervisors appeal, so that's where we are on that. Can we move on to the next one, which is 90.9.2, which is 4603.02?
Yes, back in April, I received some concerns from residents in my census tract, that at the intersection of Glen Rose and Harriet, and Glen Rose and Ventura, that they were in need of a four-way traffic signal due to pedestrian deaths, so what I did was, I contacted Public Works and I ordered a traffic study, and they told me they were going to get back with me in about two weeks, but however, I just, they just emailed me about a week ago, and they said, based on their studies, Public Works recommends establishing an all-way, an all-way stop control at the intersection of Glen Rose Avenue and Harriet Street. In addition, marked, marked crosswalks are recommended on the north and west approach of the intersection to enhance pedestrian crossing at the intersection. The necessary signs and pavement markings will be installed once the traffic regulations have been approved by the board, which will be placed on the next available traffic regulations board letter. However, they said, an all-way stop control at the intersection of Glen Rose Avenue and Ventura Street is not recommended, since the location did not meet any of the minimum criteria for establishing an all-way stop control, and the field inspection revealed that the visibility from Glen Rose Avenue is adequate, and the vehicular volume split between the two streets was not favorable for an all-way stop control, and he, he says, if we have any other questions, we can call him, and this was from Stephen Liu, Civil Engineering Assistant at the Los Angeles County Public Works, and he has a telephone number 626-348-62.
Thank you, moving on, 9.3, Census Track 4610.
Yeah, I just want to mention, so on July 13th, the County Development Authority conducted its community outreach meetings, there was two morning sessions, and so in that meeting, there was a consultant by the name of RSG, that's the consulting firm, and that was the consulting firm that helped gather all of the data and all of the responses, and based on the feedback provided from those community meetings, in which over 70 community members attended, a report was made available, so if anyone's interested in receiving this report, we can email it to you or any to the community members, and so based on these statements, you know, there was interactive participation to reflect the desires of the community members given up by prompts by the LA County Development Authority, so this report is going to be given to the developers that were identified to heed during the proposal process.
Thank you. And last, 9.4, Census Track 4613.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. This Sunday, we're having a 4610, along with the library and the historical, we're doing oral history and recording oral history of people of color, and we have a great program that's going to happen that day. Hopefully, the council will come and be there and have a table there and meet with the community, so it's at Bob Lucas Library. 2:30, 2:30 to 5:00, and it's ice cream and fruit.
Okay, so any council members that can make it, that's on Sunday, thank you. Next one, 9.4, Sec-20- Uh, next one, nine, nine-point-four, Sec forty-six one-three.
Yeah, um, we just have two really quick things. One is that the, um, the work on New York Drive continues, although it is behind schedule. So, um, they, we're keeping on top of what's going on with that. I asked again today about the revisions that need to happen east of Pepper. Um, the other thing is that, um, I, as a representative from the chambers, Sylvia is a representative from the town council. Um, we had, um, people from Jo Nekita's Small Business Group from the county. And we had Rich Marshalian, who came along with us from, uh, Code, from, uh, Regional Planning. And we, well, a week and a half ago, or whatever, we walked down a, a lot of the businesses on Washington Boulevard, uh, east, uh, west of Altadena Drive, um, and spoke to quite a number of, uh, the owners. Um, Sylvia's helping one of them that's actually having to go out of business. And, uh, I would just encourage everybody that has even teeny, tiny commercial areas. I know there's one on Woodbury, um, the Hen's Tooth area, whatever, um, that I would encourage every. We had really a great time going and talking to all these people and finding out who was doing what. And talking to them also at the chamber, but also just about getting involved with Altadena. In our case, people didn't all know they lived in, they were in Altadena, so they thought they were in Pasadena. Um, anyway, that's all we have.
Can I, can I just add to the, to the, the New York Drive? For those people that haven't been on the area near Lake, right now, I mean, that shut down because they're putting in the, um, there's a big hole in the middle of, of New York Drive.
Yes, that's totally shut down.
But they're, but they're going very quickly around the school. That's the whole purpose, is get it done before-
Yeah, just as an FYI, we learned today that tomorrow is the first day of school for St. Elizabeth's of Hungary, um, Harp Parish School. Um, and-
The CHP is on it.
We've got, yeah, we've gotten commitment from CHP to be there tomorrow morning to help them. Uh, they're going to park actually across the lake and have to cross the lake. So, we, Sylvia and I made arrangements today with CHP to go help them. So, uh, they should be okay. But yes, New York Drive is really shut down.
That's it? Okay. Before I adjourn, just want to make one quick comment is tonight, thank you very much for supporting me. This is my first evening, I'm getting my feet wet, I'm doing my best. And I think, um, I'm very, very thankful for your support and help. And also to the, the, the past chair, Koya Zimi, who took time out of his travels to personally come here this evening. So, uh, and, uh, thanks for the wonderful election, great evening. See you next month. And, um, I will, before I make the motion, um, because we're running, um, behind on time, if we could, if we have any long conversations or any meetings, could we do it in the hallway to allow the film crew inside to, uh, to actually pack up as quickly as possible? Anyone wishing on the council to help support, um, close the tables? In the meantime, can I get a motion on the table to adjourn? Okay, second? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any who knows? Okay. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Nine and seventeen.